Vice Mayor Monticello City Councilman in order, please rise and say. Judge of allegiance and then I'll defer to Mr. Fair.
Actually.
Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. I didn't see you. Steve Cagle. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we want to thank you for the day that you've given us and for the opportunity to meet tonight. I pray that you will bless these people in this room, the men and women who've given their time and ability to make Monticello better. Father, we pray that you may help them make good decisions that will benefit the people here and, Father, that Monticello continue to have your blessings as a town and as a people. We ask it in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Mayor Stoner is absent tonight. May I have a nomination for Mayor Protem?
I'd like to nominate Wendell Brock.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Rodney. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, fellow councilmen. Need a roll call for tonight's meeting, please.
Ms. Muse. Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Miss Vogt. Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kim.
Here.
Grab corn.
Thank you.
Good evening. Any in-person participation for tonight. It's the opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those people wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting. You must address the council from the seat and table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 21402. You are limited to five minutes. Do we have to sign in? Thank you, Chief. For in-person participation, we have Doug LaCron. Mr. LaCron, take your seat, please.
Good evening. Mr. Kuhn over here said I should come in and discuss a water quality issue that we're having on County Farm Road. The Riddell family, the LaCron family, and the Mingy family have been taking the brunt of really awful water for the past. Riddells have been there way longer than us, eight years. When we were building, Steve said you guys might want to put a water filtration system in, and I kind of halfway blew him off, thinking we're going to use way more water than the two of them as six of us. And two months later, I realized he was correct. So I've been running water, six-month water filters. I've done all sorts of different research, used different ones. It's the only way where we can keep our tubs, our clothes, anything remotely clean. There's, I got tons of pictures. I've got tons of examples. I've worked extensively with Scott Bailey. Hats off to Scott. He has been a pleasure to talk to. When I call him, no matter what time of night, he answers and says, okay, he's making notes on when the water quality's gotten bad. The main thing is, over the last almost two years, we've noticed anytime the ground is saturated, we have water quality issues. Anytime it rains, we really have water quality issues. And if it's frozen or dry, our filters last a month. I mean, fifteen dollars a month to keep our water clean. I replace the filter, we go on. These last two weeks, I've went through six filters, and I've even upgraded to like the thirty-dollar filter, the four, I mean, doing everything possible. And last two weeks ago, a week ago Friday, Mr. Kuhn and I had sent him some pictures. When we had all that slush on the ground, our water was literally unbearable. We could not do anything with it. I couldn't filter it. I couldn't do nothing. And then this last Thursday, when it started raining again and the ground was already soaked, our water at five o'clock was perfectly fine. By five-thirty, it was so nasty, my kids wouldn't bathe in it. It was, I mean, just yellow. I can show everyone pictures if you want them. I can print them off, whatever we need to do. But this incident is so bad that the Mingys have lived there less than two years, and they're getting ready to put in their third water heater. It's coming in. It has nothing to do, they have a filtration system. We have one. Riddells have one. I can show you pictures of filters, everything. That's just going to waste everyone's time. It's, it's bad right there. And when we don't use, and if Mingys are using a lot of water for a few days, say he's watering his yard or washing vehicles, our water gets better. And Steve and Carol said when we, when they, when we moved in, their water got slightly better. When Mingys moved in, their water even got a little bit better. It's just, it's, it's an instance that no one can figure out. Everyone keeps saying that, oh, if we had a hole in the line, there'd be water blowing everywhere. I've talked to other people saying that, yeah, that's true, but there's actually instances where you can create suction at a joint and be sucking in a dirt or some sort of thing, which would make great sense with the rain or when the ground's not frozen. There's an area right next to Bridge Street. Everyone knows where the Green Building is, the tower, where the Water Conservation Building is there. There's two joints there. I went down there with a spade the other day and literally took the spade, stuck it in the ground with ease all the way to the handle. There's something weird going on there. Terry and I had a great conversation this morning about this. We don't know. We're, we're to the fact that you can shut our water off if you have to for a day or two. I don't care. It's just nasty. It's, I don't want to use the word unsafe, but it sure the heck looks like it's unsafe. I mean, it's, it's, it's yellow. I put it on bypass. I've done everything that the engineers, the city guys have asked. I mean, we've taken samples till we're blue in the face. We've tried everything, and it's, it's just nasty water. So Mr. Kuhn said I should come here and present my case. If you guys would like any more pictures, evidence, questions, I'm all in on helping get this done. Scott is allowed in my, in my garage to take samples when I'm not home. I don't care. But it's, it's to the, it's getting so bad that I can't, I can't filter it out anymore. And when I can't filter it out, or they tell me, ask me to put it on bypass, when I put it on bypass, you don't even want to see what it looks like. It's, it's, it's bad. So it's, we're paying for water, and we're not, we're getting worse than well water. And it's, it's something weird is going on. And I just asked the city to do more investigating. Everyone's always listened, but we seem like we take one step forward and two steps back with this thing. And my gut feeling, it's in that area, right there by Bridge Street. I mean, as much as we dealt with it, his guys have been great about showing me the maps, how the flow is, what valves are shut off that day. We stand there and we scratch our heads and look together, and there's two valves right there, and it's got to be something in there. My personal opinion, because it runs off that road, across that rock. It's not in the middle of a grass soaking in, like it would take a long time to soak through grass. It's not going to, if you're hitting the road and there's a ten-foot drop and it's heading towards these valves, I think it's, I mean, it seems really bad. And we catch the brunt of it, and it just, it gets better as it goes down, down the road. And this is not just last Thursday, when everyone was angry and mad about their water. It wasn't just that day. We've been dealing with this for almost two years. And I appreciate any help or support you guys can give to the staff of the city to get something fixed, because I'm tired of dealing with it, and I'm tired of getting in the middle of dealing with it. I'm tired of getting yelled at at home about it. So. Anyone has any questions?
I mean, your five minutes is actually up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
No, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. LaCron.
Yep.
I assure you, I'm sure you've chatted with Terry and been in touch. We'll do all we can. I, you know, I'm the same way. I read all Facebook comments and stuff, and I, we've had great water for years. So I'm with you. There's something there, and we'll keep trying to find it.
It seems very isolated to be that bad.
We'll, we'll keep trying to solve it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Remote participation tonight. This is the opportunity for the public to provide comment to the presiding officer. Comments must comply with ordinance 21402, limited to five minutes or less. Members are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by mail, voicemail, or through web conference. Do we have any remote entries tonight?
We do. Mr. Brock, Steve Streffler would like to say a few words. Steve?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to what the previous gentleman said. This water situation, and you know I'm very pro-Monticello, and I'm definitely pro-Scott Bailey, and our water system has always been so excellent here. Matter of fact, when we ran our greenhouse and nursery business, I sent samples off to have them tested, because it was important for my business. And it came back so, so good that the engineer wrote a handwritten note. He was so excited about the water quality of the sample that I sent him. So something's changed. I realize that's been twenty years ago, but this is not an isolated incident, I don't believe. I don't know that it's related to elsewhere in town. But as the administrator of the Monticello Open Forum, I'll tell you, this discussion has occurred there. And it's not, it's not a particular neighborhood. It seems like various places in Monticello, including my neighborhood, including my house, we've experienced the same thing with the water quality. We don't know what it is. We don't know if it's dangerous. We don't know what it is. But it's not what it's been for the last fifty years. So anyway, enough said. I just wanted to let you know this, this is not an isolated incident. It sounds like they're having a worse problem with it than most. But maybe it's related, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of it, even if we have to pay somebody from out of town to come in and help Scott figure it out. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Streffler. We appreciate your input. The consent agenda for tonight. Documents and action items are listed. The claims report for claims dated February the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three through March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Meeting minutes, the city council meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Council meeting members, December twelfth of twenty-twenty-two. These have been amended, and I'm going to ask Jill to speak to this.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know what I amended. When our auditor was reviewing our notes, minutes from last, when we did a resolution to approve the budget, I copied and pasted from the year before and left a paragraph in from the previous year. So your amendment is this section that says, lists everything that, when Terry talks about reinvestment. So that was from the previous year, so it's now been amended, but we have to have you re-approve them. So just that one section was corrected. Just wanted to let you know what you were approving.
Everyone see that situation? Okay. The permit report for February of twenty-twenty-three, the police report of February twenty-twenty-three, and the fire report of February twenty-twenty-three. Any additions or amendments? I would move to have these accepted as shown.
So move. Second.
Second. We have motion and second.
Okay. Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The mayor's report, we will pass on tonight. Nothing, Jill, you don't, you didn't have anything for me.
No, there was none.
Okay, we'll pass on that. No old business, we'll go to new business, please. We have posted a public hearing for the amendment of a business district in Monticello. Tonight we have representatives for Moran Economic Development to provide some general public information regarding the business district plan for the proposed Monticello Business District. Gentlemen from Moran's.
Why don't you go ahead and open public hearing?
Oh.
You can just declare.
I'm sorry. We will declare the public hearing for the amendment of the Business District in Monticello to be open.
Thank you. Yeah, just following up on our, the meeting that we had on February thirteenth, where we discussed how the amended area qualifies, some of the goals and objectives of the amended redevelopment plan, things like that. As part of the amendment process, a public hearing is required. I'm not sure if everybody's here for the business district amendment. We have some maps here. Does anybody? Somebody else? So what we're talking about, the city had an existing business district. What we did, they proposed to add some properties to that district, some properties on the north side, on the west side, on the south side, in order to amend a business district similar to establishing in the first place, an eligibility study. What we did finds that these properties qualify for inclusion in the business district. Some of the reasons for the amendment is to make infrastructure utility improvements, basically for a business district. Money generated within that district has to spend in the district. So in order to use some of the revenues that have been generated by an existing area and potential revenues by the new area, the boundary was amended to be able to, again, utilize those revenues in other quarters of the city. The business district is a sales tax-based program. It's one percent on certain sales. It does not apply to groceries, medicine, any licenses of state of Illinois, no boats, no RVs, no medical licenses, things like that. Basically, anything that's subject to the higher local state sales tax is what the business district tax would apply to. So with that being said, I'm here to hopefully answer any questions about the business district program. If there's any specific things about the city's business district that they have, I'm sure some citizens will be able to speak to those better than I. But again, this is the opportunity to, if anyone has any questions about the proposed amendment or the proposed redevelopment plan.
There's a sentence in here that I'm enshrined in. Under, I mean, I mean, historic provision on south side.
Okay.
So under IMA, I was describing a person property. Since the property is located in one of the two residential historic districts for public improvements and planning, I'm curious what that's referring to, what kind of public improvements are you talking about there? South Charter area.
I can speak to that, Jill. So right now, our current, this twelve, which is our current, our downtown historic district, we have three on the National Art District. Our downtown historic district is already in the business district. We want to extend or south charter and, or include the south charter in North State for public improvements. Some things that the council has talked about for many, many years is addition of historical lighting that kind of fits, you know, the aesthetics of the district, and in addition to sidewalk improvements, any roadway improvements, things like that. So just allocate extra funding to help better those districts. Yep. So that's why it just included the right-of-way. And we couldn't use a right-of-way as a connector, so it just included one side of the parcel. But the funds, at this point, the idea is not to use the funds for the private side of things, but the public side for residences.
And just speaking of residences in general, a common question is, the business district why doesn't include residential anyways? The main, the main reason would be to be able to use revenues for in residential areas. The business district has nothing to do with zoning, has nothing to do with what you do as a property, any uses of the property, anything like that. Just basically being able to use business district funds within that boundary area.
I will make a waterfall a comment on this opportunity. I have rusty water at my house. So I keep a water filter on it, and I'm changing it at least once a month, sometimes a week. I don't want to give orange glow in the bathtub on the toilet. Any further comment on the business district situation?
I will just indicate that as a representative of both the Monticello Area Chamber and Monticello Main Street, we do not have any issue with this, and in fact, are in favor of giving our businesses in our community an ability to take advantage of building improvement grants and other programming that will be available through this funding source.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, your assistance.
Close the hearing.
The public hearing on the amendment to the business district is now closed. We will move on. I want to open the public hearing posted for the annual appropriation ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven. It's an opportunity for the public to provide comment relating to the annual appropriation. Anyone on the floor have questions or input on the appropriation? Anyone? Anyone remote?
No.
Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on the appropriation ordinance. We will move on. The ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven, this is an ordinance for the appropriation for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, for the city of Monticello in Pike County, Illinois. Mr. Summers, will you speak to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Brock. As always, the city council annually adopts an appropriation ordinance. That has to be done in the first quarter of each fiscal year. You have to hold the public hearing, which we just did. It was just recently closed. The public hearing notice was published in the March first, twenty-twenty-three edition of Pike County Journal of Republican, as required by state statute. As we spoke at the last council meeting, February twenty-seventh, there's no, there's not been any revisions to the appropriation ordinance, other than those items that we spoke of at the last city council meeting. So it's recommended the city council adopt the FY twenty-twenty-three annual appropriation ordinance. You guys were provided a copy of it as well. I would like to take this opportunity that an ordinance would take all five votes for approval. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Any questions from council? Chair would entertain a motion. Fast ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
We have motion and second.
Ready for roll call?
Please.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twelve. This is an ordinance approving the final plat, Dancing Acres Phase One A subdivision here in Pike County. I'm sorry, Jim, this is yours.
I slipped over here to this chair, so I could be close to the. I did. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twelve is the final plat for Dancing Acres Phase One A subdivision in Pike County, Illinois. Mr. Lampard is here if you have any questions that you want to ask him after I read the, the wherewithal for this thing. He submitted the final plat for Dancing Acres Phase One and all the supporting documents for the city, the city staff to review. We've reviewed it and the subdivision, since it's within the city limits of Monticello, now that we've annexed it recently, actually as of, I think it was October, and it was ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-nine, we annexed that property. The subdivision has to have the city council's review and approval by way of ordinance, and that's per section one-fifty-two dot zero-zero-two that we have jurisdiction over it, and one-fifty-two dot zero-four-four for the final plat submission and review procedure of the municipal code. Staff has reviewed the final plat and associated documents. We find that the plat substantially complies with the city ordinance as required, and it is required to be passed by an ordinance of that section one-fifty-two dot zero-four-four. I'm recommending that the city council discuss and approve the final plat for Dancing Acres Phase One Subdivision. That's the, the, that's the crux of it. This is the subdivision that you all approved that preliminary plan for. That kind of lies by, behind Opel Drive and the township building, just to kind of wrap your mind around where it's at. And if you have any questions, Mr. Lampard's here to answer them.
Any questions from council? Comments?
My only comment was, the last time we, we approved a plat, we required sidewalks. The original plat didn't require sidewalks. And so I don't know if that's a precedent or if that's, that applies here, if that's something that, you know, it's more of a question whether we think that's something that things should be in, in new subdivisions in general.
We do require sidewalks as part of the preliminary plan and the engineering documents. The way they're being handled in this subdivision is that they're going to be built after the houses are built. And that's actually something that, now new to this position, I find to be beneficial.
Fine.
Yeah.
I didn't see it in here. That's why, that's the only reason I asked.
I got you. Yeah, this is more the, this is what creates the legal lots. The engineering documents have that information on it. And that's something that, yes, we reviewed and we were requiring at, at a certain time. I just didn't include it.
It's not included. And we'll require it as, as homes are built there.
Following the construction of the home.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So the final plat doesn't show any infrastructure whatsoever. But the site engineering plans are approved internally. The plat is brought forward for your approval based upon an internal review of those infrastructure.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Any further? Chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twelve for the final plat of the Dancing Acres Phase One Subdivision.
So move.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The resolution twenty-three days thirteen. This is a resolution authorizing the Illinois Municipal League to collect a two percent foreign fire insurance license fee for the Foreign Fire Insurance Board of the City of Monticello Fire Department. Mr. Summers will speak to what the foreign board is.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. So the last time we approved something like this was nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Illinois Municipal League recently reached out to more Metcalf and the office and requested that we approve a resolution, in theory, appointing a board to oversee those funds. Those funds, we've been collecting since nineteen-thirty-eight, and they're in the General Revenue Fund. And what this is doing is Chief Rupke and his two lieutenants are going to comprise this board, and they're just going to ensure, from a board's standpoint, that those funds collected were spent towards the fire department. And I think the funds were ten thousand or fourteen thousand dollars. Their budget is way over ten or fourteen, whatever thousand dollars that they're saying they will use. But we spend way more than that for, on the fire department's budget. So this is simply something that Illinois Municipal League has requested that we pass a new resolution for. Though it is recommended, obviously based upon IML's request, we discuss and approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirteen.
Been hanging out there a long time. Nineteen what?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-something. Long time. Any comment or questions from the council? We entertain a motion. Accept Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirteen is read.
So moved.
A second? I'll second it.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving forward to Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen. This is a resolution authorizing the updating of the online banking services of the First State Bank. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Brock. This resolution has to deal with, obviously, like you said, our online banking services with First State Bank. We currently have a limit, and I don't know what that limit was off the top of my head, but we are everly, are ever always increasing or going over that limit. So this is just allowing us to increase that limit just for the cost of payroll. We all know minimum wage is going up to fifteen dollars by twenty-twenty-five. Our payrolls will be going up, and our expenditures have been going up. So this just sets a ceiling that we can operate on a daily basis to get payroll out, so on and so forth. Any expenditure obviously is approved by, by the city council and shown in the claims. It's, this is just kind of some paperwork that allows more of an opportunity to, to get some expenditures paid for.
Questions from the council? Mr. Clark, any questions?
None for me, thank you.
Chair would entertain the motion to accept resolution 2023-14 is read. Second, have a motion, a second.
So you run. Okay. Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2023-15, this is a resolution amending the professional services agreement, Good Energy LP for energy consulting services. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Brock. In 2013, the city of Monticello entered into a professional services agreement with Good Energy to design and implement an opt-out aggregation program. This is for the residential services. Good Energy provides services for a bidding process. They bid, I forget how many communities, there's 20 or so communities, more than 20 or so communities that go in for an aggregate bid. I believe we, what we did pretty well, especially this past year, by doing that and the resident can opt out. So this amendment revises the fees that Good Energy collects from .00075 kilowatt hour to .001 per kilowatt hour. So a slight increase and that's what the city of Monticello gets as well. That's, so it is recommended and Jared, I don't remember Jared, he's presented it before from Good Energy. He couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, but it is recommended the city council discuss and approve resolution 2023-15 as presented. They will be bidding yet this month, I think, to see who maybe the new supplier might be. So we might have some, some pretty good news or it, it's probably going to go up a little bit based upon what, what we've seen from the volatility of the market. So is our rate locked in through the end of this year, I believe?
They've been with us for some time, haven't they? We dealt with this company for some time.
Yes.
Any other questions? Questions from the council? Chair would entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2023-15, amending the professional services agreement with Good Energy.
To move.
A second?
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to ordinance 2023 day 16. This is an ordinance declaring surplus property, authorizing for a purchase of property. Terry?
Thank you. During the February 27th, 2023 regularly scheduled city council meeting, council was presented with an additional expenditure request within the FY 2023 general fund budget to add the purchase of two additional new squad vehicles for the Monticello Police Department. The purchase of these two additional police pursuit vehicles is included in the annual appropriation ordinance that you approved earlier this evening. In that, the city will be trading in a 2013 Chevrolet Impala and the 2019 Ford Expedition towards the purchase price of these vehicles. So some of that was discussed during the budget discussions in, in December of last year and approved, approved tonight in the appropriation ordinance. So we're going to trade these vehicles in for some new pursuit vehicles for the police department. It is recommended the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2023-16 as submitted.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Are you going with the SUVs or you don't go?
The Explorers.
That's just more nosy than anything else.
Everybody understand what's going on? The chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2023-16 for the declaration of surplus property and authorizing purchase as read.
To move.
Second. Have a motion, a second.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We just got home.
Move on to the alderman's reports for this evening. Mr. Woodham, you have anything tonight?
I just want to say thanks to the city folks for picking up the limbs. I'm sure the first, the first trip is always a big, but I think the Friday and before secured that. There was limbs down everywhere and they did a great job. I saw them out Tuesday and Wednesday. Great work, so that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, anything?
Yeah, I just want to echo the same thing. And did they get done, Terry? Any chance there?
Doing some more today.
Okay. Oh, it's been a long process.
I had a big pile and they did pick mine up and I thank you very much. That's really all I have.
Want to go ahead, Mike?
I echo that. I did all the pickup over the weekend and it was, I looked at it and it was gone, so appreciate that. I, I do, and I, and I had lengthy discussion with Mr. McCrone about the, the water situation. And I think, and Mr. Schaeffler in public comment spoke to the fact that the city is being very diligent and has been very diligent at this issue. And I'm just, I think we're at a point, because it's, it is, it seems to be worse at, on the County Farm Road area. And I've seen some comments from folks that live in Apple Tree and, and Mr. McCrone talked about that he's, he's new construction and has his, had his property looked at and there's nothing internally that there should be an issue. So this isn't, this is definitely an external issue. And ironically, it comes in a day we're approving the appropriations amendment. But I, you know, I think it's behoof of the city to, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, to spend money and whatever it takes to get this resolved. So I, you know, I, it's, if you, if you don't have clean water, that's, that's one of the basic things I think as a city we can provide. And, and we're working on it and I think everybody realizes that, but I think, I mean, trying to maybe step up and, and, you know, spend whatever, whatever it takes to figure out what the issue is. So I, I'm just dedicated to making sure that we, we see this through because this has been, it's an escalating problem that I think, you know, it doesn't, doesn't speak well. There's so many great things about Monticello and, and the water has been good for a number of years, but this is something I think where it begins to get out that Monticello has a water issue and I think that's not something that anybody here wants to have happen, so.
Thank you. Burris, anything?
I can't add anything to the night. That's funny.
Very good. Thank you very much. I want to, again, assure you, Mr. McCrone, we will.
Thank you.
We'll do everything we can to help you and, and your neighbors and all those folks out there. It's a problem and we will fix it. Somehow we will fix it. Okay. Police chief's report, Chief Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Brock. We did have a first staff meeting in recent memory. We were able to have it in here, had everyone attend, got some things hashed out. Just a real good meeting that hasn't happened in quite a while, but we were able to get on the same page, so that was a good thing. On the source of meetings, I did meet with the Community Action Group last week. Very nice group of people, looking forward to working with them. I'm also working or meeting with the chamber on Friday and then the school admin group next week, just to really start getting a little more involved, let everyone know, you know, the police, yeah, we're here to protect on the same end. If we can help out, we will. We did, just so you know, I approved a permit for May 6th, the Kirby Derby. I sent that to city admin, I think public works, if I remember my email right. So that's coming here in a couple of months. Golf cart permits. I was here for a half hour on my first day before the first person wanted to get a golf cart permit. We didn't get them in, so everyone's more than welcome to come and get their new permit. And then we did receive a free to us drug take back box. We have, there's one at Kirby that we empty out, but we, whenever someone came into the police department to give their old medications, unfortunately, an officer or poor Wendy or Gail ended up having to handle those, they end up taking up space in our evidence locker or the vault. So we teamed up with the company. It's absolutely free. They gave us the free metal box. They give us the free shipping materials, so whenever it's full, we can ship it directly out, no cost to the city. And we don't have to worry about it going into the, you know, sewer system, wastewater, anywhere else where it can really kind of run havoc. So we're really looking forward to, to getting to utilize that. So we'll still do the, you know, two, two a year drug take back days. I think the next one's in April, but this is for those that want to bring it in just on any day that ends in Y. And if they can drop it off, then that way none of the office staff have to handle it. So that's my reporting on this.
Thank you.
Ask questions.
Cost of golf cart permits?
$35. Can anyone have a golf cart here?
$35.
$35.
I like that price.
$34 on a bidding.
Thank you, Chief, very much. Chief Rupke was unable to be with us tonight for the fire chief's report, so we're going to waive that for the next time around. City admin report, Mr. Summers?
Just real quick, I would like to echo the accolades from Mr. McCrone and Mr. Schaeffler of Scott Bailey. I would add similar accolades or the same accolades to Kevin Rose, who's next in line for Scott. Scott has been working on this very diligently for a while now. Scott and I and Kevin will be meeting with the engineer tomorrow, again, tomorrow. And I would definitely, if the council, we, if we have something to come to the council to amend the appropriation ordinance to, for another expenditure, we will definitely bring that to, to the council. And the new meter reader water labor, Lake Clifton started and March weather in Illinois, the first day he was reading meters, it was 60 and the next day it was 30 mile an hour gust and 30. So he had seven seasons there his first couple of weeks. So, so far, so good. He's doing a great job and is doing it as quick and as efficient and I think as accurate as his predecessors. So, so far, so good. That's all I have.
Very good. Questions or comments, direct to Mr. Summers, anyone?
Hey, Mr. Summers, real quick, with regards to the lake, I've known that, that kid for a very long time and it's great to see him get a, a job, you know, with the city and excited to see his career developed with the town. And it's just a kind of special when you get to see somebody as a, a small, you know, a child grow up into now be a part of the city as an adult and continue that tradition. So great hire, in my opinion.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I want to comment on the people in the audience tonight. We do appreciate your attendance. Many meetings we go through without a soul sitting in our chairs and we thank you for coming and thank you for your interest. This time the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Second. If you ever say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. You are adjourned.